Okay, we're going to call it Wednesday over my November 9th, 2016 Manistee City Council Work Session to Order. We have several items on the agenda, but first we'll start off with the public comments. So anyone who'd like to publicly comment? Seeing none of you, we'll move on to the work session. First item on the agenda is a discussion on the frozen water line policy, which will be conducted by our Speedy Angel Dad Taylor and our DPW Director Jeff McFulwer.
I'm going to defer to Jeff.
Okay.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Well, it's a distant and painful memory, but the two and three winters ago, the winter of 1314 and 1415 were some of the hardest winters. The first of those two were, we had the highest snowfall ever. We detected frost up to seven feet down in the ground. We had over 400 services that froze that winter, and we did the first citywide run water ever in our history. That was followed up by the next year. The snowfall wasn't as bad, but the temperatures were real low, and we again had over 400 freeze-ups. Last year, we didn't have one single report of a frozen water service citywide. So we had the best and the worst. Bruce talked about it a little bit when he did his annual report. But from our perspective, there were so many different scenarios that occurred, we thought that it really put the policy to the test. And so we sat down this last several months and have been talking about what in the policy made it difficult for us to administer and help and assist customers. And so basically, that's how we went through it, is we've gone through easy times, the toughest times, and so we just walked through the policy and looked for ways that we could update it and improve on it. I believe you all have copies of it and have read through it, but the first change that we recommended is just how we notify the public. We've actually made several changes on that the last couple of years, but not the public, but the individual residents. When we maintain a run water list every year, so houses that we know are susceptible to freeze-ups, we notify those each winter on when they start running water, and then we notify them again in the spring on when to stop. So in the past, we've put door hangers, just put door hangers out for both of those notifications. Two years ago, we added some more information on those door hangers. Last year, we started doing mailings in addition, and then we came up with, we had some conflicts where a resident may not be owner occupied, and somewhere between the owner and the tenant didn't get the notification. So we've added language that'll go to both. So if it's not owner occupied, we'll send out an additional notice. The next proposed change that we had was the residents' new freeze-ups. So if a house has never froze before, but it has a freezing occurrence, basically the old language said that in those instances, the city would thaw it, and then you would be added to the run water list. What we've changed is the unconditional of the city will thaw it. We have limited tools available to us, and the best tool that we have is our Jet D-icer, where we actually remove the water meter, hook up to the line, and we inject hot water into the line to freeze the ice blockage, and then that water is recirculated. When we're able to use that home, they can range from 20 to, what, 20 minutes to an hour?
Yep.
And it's very efficient. It takes, you know, one or two people, and we've had great success with that. When it doesn't work is when we have services that are not copper. Copper pipes don't tend to collect a lot of mineral buildup on the inside and corrosion, and so it allows the Jet D-icer to snake through very easily. But when we've got old galvanized services, it can't navigate the inside of the pipe. Also, the old galvanized services are very common to have 90-degree bends in those, and our PEX tubes can't round that. So in the past, the tool that we've used is a welder. We've contracted with a welding service. They've hooked up electrodes to the services, to the system, ran electricity, and then the heat eventually generated enough heat where the ice blockage would melt. Frankly, there's a lot of risk in doing that. Fires are not an uncommon occurrence if stray electricity gets in the house or into a different house. So from a staff level, we're very uncomfortable with using the welders, and I've spoken with our insurance representative, and they do not recommend that we use welders at all. They won't prohibit it, but they said as soon as we get into that business, even if we're subcontracting it out, it exposes the city to liability. So the language that's presented before you says that when a new freeze-up occurs, we will make every attempt to use our Jet D-icer to thaw that line, but if we're not successful, then thawing of the line is the responsibility of the homeowner, and they can contract out. And there's multiple different ways that contractors could do it, up to and including the welding instance. The next change that we've incorporated was the definition of vacancy. The previous policy created an exception that if a home or a business or a structure is vacant, then it's the responsibility of the owner to thaw that line. So we ran into many instances where where does that line, where is that line drawn for vacancy? If you were gone for the weekend, was it vacant? If you were away for a week? If you went to Florida for the month, or you're gone for the whole winter? Is the house up for sale? We have a lot of non-occupied structures. So we tried to kind of break the middle ground or put it in the middle ground, and we define vacancies for the purposes of this general policy as seven days, if the house remains vacant or unoccupied for seven days. Beyond that, it becomes the responsibility of the owner up to the seven days, and we'll certainly try our D-icer at no cost to the citizen. And then we also added a section, the last, I think it's section four, where we talked about the citywide run water. Even though we've done it only twice in our history, we've done it twice in the past three years. So we wanted to put a little bit of information in there. Basically, what it says is the city will make every effort to notify all of our water customers that there's a mandatory run water, and once that happens, you are required to run the water, and any freeze-ups that occur will be your responsibility. Now, we've put in there that we would notify, and we've done this in the past, mentioning council meetings, going to the media outlets, our local newspaper, television. We had it added to, you know, the television list that were being maintained. We posted on the city's Facebook page, but it's pretty tough to do a mailing to the whole customer base and have that response enacted timely. We also have put a grace period in there, so we understand sometimes it takes, you know, a few days to get that information out and have people react to it. So I believe that summarizes the general changes that we've...
Yeah, we just wanted to bring this to council's attention, let you know that we have looked at it, updated it based on our experiences in the past years, and give you the opportunity to make any comments you might have before we act it.
Jeff, about how many homes are on the list that are susceptible to freezing?
There's 293 on the list. That's about 10% of the service connections in the city.
Okay. Are most of those occupied during the winter?
Yes.
Okay.
Right.
And why are those homes particularly susceptible to freezing? Is it because of the depth of the lines, or?
Usually, that's the case. So there are places in the city where the mains, our mains are real shallow and susceptible. There's instances where the individual laterals are susceptible. And so we maintain that list, and we upgrade it. When somebody does some sort of construction, well, let me give you a, for instance, every time we do a water or sewer project where we're tearing up roads and we're doing pipeline work, probably for the past at least 15 years, we've made it a part of the contract that all of the laterals from the main to the curb stops get replaced with copper, and they get buried either to the proper depth or they get insulated, and the water mains also get insulated if they're not at sufficient depth. So in instances where those occur, then we can peel some of those addresses off of that list. The list has grown, it probably shrunk three years ago, and it's grown the last couple winters a little bit.
Okay, because I know when we did the Burton and Associate Rate Study, and increased rates over a period of time, that part of the rationale there was to start building some funds to fund infrastructure depreciation.
Correct.
Or a period of time, are those priority lines, or is something that we're looking at in the future? Is there some sort of a schedule for that?
But it's certainly one of the factors when we're looking at which lines to replace. The top priority for us are lines that are undersized, so four-inch lines and lower as mains, they don't have enough water for fire flow. That becomes kind of the first tier of what we want to replace. The second tier would be the maintenance, where we've got sections, where we've got bad valves, or we have continual breaks, and we know that the lines are older. That would be another, a second tier, and the depth would be probably in that third tier, but certainly that becomes a factor.
Okay, you're able to monitor the water flow. Is there a high percentage of the susceptible line people that actually run water, or is there low compliance on that?
Do you have any answer?
Well, I would say that the susceptible ones, if they're not running water, in a typical winter, they will freeze. Now, there are, at least, I would say, and Bruce can correct me, but at least half a dozen times during the winter, people that are on their own water list will freeze up anyway. And most of the time, they will admit that, screwed up, I brushed my teeth, and I just by habit turned it off, went to bed, and woke up and it was froze. But I think that we haven't monitored, well, let me put it this way. We have to adjust all of their bills down, so there's evidence that they are running water. And we can actually, with our new tracking software that we purchased in the local, or the mobile scanning equipment, we can actually go back in the daily history and be able to see if, for some reason, it had stopped out. We don't proactively do that, but we could go back and research that.
I've heard numbers thrown around in the past that only about 30% of the people whom would go to citywide run water actually participate in that and remain at risk. Is that still a pretty good estimate?
The two years that we did a citywide run water, we had, I would say in the 30% to 35%, actually, we had to adjust their bills down. So only about a third of the people actually utilized that mandatory run water.
Thank you. Do you just adjust the usage, or do you adjust the waste too?
Both.
Good point.
Yeah. When you're on the run water, we adjust down the bills. We take the previous three months prior to the run, and then they take the average of that, and then they use that to prorate over the winter time. So it comes out both water and sewer.
And then if the city were to use the welders, did the insurance say that they would cover it if something were to happen?
Well, the policy that we'd updated was created based on recommendations years ago from the insurance company. And the city used to use its own welders, so they put a stop to that, and they said, you have, you can, if you use welders, and I'm talking about information that I've gleaned from the past, but if you use welders, you need to contract it out, and there has to be a liability waiver signed by the building owner. When I spoke with our insurance agent, she said, we're not going to stop you from doing that, but as soon as you do it, you open yourself up to all kinds of liability.
Well, one of the things too to consider with that is, they would cover us, but then that would affect our rating going forward with insurances. So if we go against what their recommendations are, and we cause a fire, and they have to pay a loss, that's going to be a consideration at our annual renewal. It won't be favorable.
And is there any other way that you can unfreeze those pipes without doing the welding, other than the jet?
The Jet D-icer, one of the techniques that we used last year, we contracted it out, but we opened up the curb stop, so we opened up the ground, and disconnected the pipe, and then injected hot water either way to thaw. And we had contractors that were set up to be able to do that, and they had, I would say, pretty good success. There were several of the old galvanized, again, that just, they could not get it to work. That's a very expensive way of handling it, though. So one of the things, I mean, for us, the bottom line is, we think that those two winters have shaken out all the susceptible services in our system. I mean, we went through the worst winters in our record. So we think that the 290-some that are on our run water list are probably the limit of our susceptible services. The ultimate goal is to replace your services and upgrade those to copper. When they're copper, we can help you out. So for the past at least three years, each time a resident has replaced the service from their house to the curb stop, we have been replacing the service line from the curb stop to the main with copper as well. And our view is, if you're going to invest in improving your water line, your pressure, we're going to invest with you and do the same. So that's been, we've done, how many a year do you think we've been doing?
Twenty-five a year, probably.
Yes, 20, 25. And then we're being proactive with the construction projects also. So eventually, we hope to get the system where this isn't an issue anymore.
Well, I'm one of the residents on that list. Two years ago, mine froze up, and I was without water for a week. So, and I know they have a contract welders. So what is the, do you know the normal rate? How much, if that were the case, the owners would have to contact the welders? Is there...
Do you remember what their hourly rate was?
No, hourly rate's $150 an hour.
And the welder we use had training and a special insurance provision to be able to do that work, because it's got a higher liability exposure.
Jeff, when do we start sending out the notices?
We track the weather, and then we look at, we kind of forecast that out on when we're getting frost in the ground, and then we try to time it so that we can hit a billing cycle cleanly. So...
But it's usually around the first week of December, I believe.
Very sympathetic.
Yeah.
How many freeze-ups did we have, did we have last year, excuse me?
Zero.
Zero, okay, beautiful. And then on the, on the water mains, when you run the new mains, can you use PEX on that, or is it all, you want to use copper?
We, well, the mains, we use ductile iron. And...
Lattles?
What's that?
Lattles?
The laterals, we're using copper. Copper's easy to trace. It's got, it's easy to trace because of the conductivity.
Yep.
It's easy to install, and that's the recommended method. The only place that we've put in any kind of plastic laterals is on Maple Street in Filer Township. We've got five or six services south of 12th Street between 12th and 14th. They continuously leak, and they're leaking as they cross a DTE gas main. There's some sort of electrolysis happening there. We've contacted DTE. They've got their corrosion experts looking into it with us. But we've, on some of those, we've just, in fact, we did one last week where we just replaced it with, with plastic, with PEX, just because it's the fourth time in two years that we've had to fix it.
Yeah.
Frustrating.
Can be. I think this is really informative, right to the chase. But what do you suggest for somebody that maybe is going to be gone for two weeks or three weeks and not on their own water?
Well, the first thing that I would suggest is, they can contact our water department. We're tracking the frost ups in the ground. Bruce and the guys have intimate knowledge on the mains, the depths alone, and so they can give some recommendations based on the weather conditions and that sort of thing. But my personal suggestion is, if you're going to be gone for a period of time, run some water. The amount of water that you'll run in a couple of weeks, maybe it costs you 20, 30, 50 bucks, 100 bucks, but that's a lot cheaper than $1,500 if you got to dig it up and fix it.
Sure is.
Is this Easton Lake Street? Every year, we seem to have issues with one property owner that we don't. How do we fix that?
Well, in that particular instance, they have identified a sink that is not in a commonly used area, and have, when they turn the water on, they've informed us that they've removed the...
The valve.
The valve. So it stays on and it runs water. And that's what we recommend, recommend people. When they do run their water, don't run it in the bathroom sink where you're passing by and you might turn it off by accident. If you've got a place in the basement or someplace that's, you know, in a utility closet or something like that, firstly, you don't hear it all the time, but second, you're not just tempted to turn it off. And so that, I think that poses a lower risk of an accidental shut-off. But in that zone, we actually found, we were tracking it about where we were finding freeze-ups, those two bad weathering.
Essentially, where we were...
Two blocks of Taylor Street.
On Taylor Street.
Made it even more susceptible.
On Taylor Street.
So we had, we've got that whole street running water now until we can get that valve replaced. Down on Hancock, if you remember, we had a main that froze on Hancock Street going down the hill between Filer and Lake, and we had a water leak, found out it was the main that broke, but we found out that the whole section froze. And we were able to trace it back to a valve that was put in during construction five years prior to that, and we believe it was the contractor that broke it in the closed position. So that whole peninsula down there only had one water source, and I believe it was just a four-inch that fed that whole peninsula. So that made that, that problem worse, made it worse, basically, for the residents down there. So we've replaced that main, we've replaced that valve, and now there's two sources of water which will keep it fresher and warmer. So really, two, we did stuff on our end, they did stuff on their end.
Even, even with the run water, when you talk about some of our mains are not buried sufficient depth, have we had a main freeze as opposed to service level?
The only one I can think of is 15th Street.
Can you think of many?
Washington, Taylor.
Yeah, what? The only place we've had them froze is where we've had a dead end because of a broken valve.
Okay.
And honestly, the decision to run citywide water, and we've talked about this before, but that decision is, number one, to protect our water system so that the mains aren't freezing. Number two, if there's a high level of residents that are freezing that are just beyond what is normal and they're at risk, I think it's, it's a tough decision, but I think it's worthwhile for us to spend the money to pump, you know, pump the extra water and treat the extra water, and to save those residents, even though there's a lot of consequences with it. As you mentioned, Councilmember Smith, we only had a 30%, compliance when we did that, but it also puts a lot, a big strain on our treatment plan. And if you run that water into spring, we start getting spring fuzz. It increases the loading there. Could trigger what is now a sanitary sewer overflow as opposed to combined sewer overflow. So it takes quite a bit to trigger that.
Anyone for the comments or questions? Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have a discussion on the warning signs at Maple Street or on the middle school.
The reason I asked for this to be put on the work session is that I walk Maple Street during the day, and I do kind of a little survey of cars speeding, and about out of 30, 40 cars, you have about 30% or 35% that exceed the speed limit. And with Kennedy School being on Maple Street now, drop-offs and pickup, what, elementary, Matt, what, you got first grade in there?
Four, five, six.
Four, five, six, okay. And I've had a, I almost hit a couple kids jumping out on me on Maple Street between the cars. Drivers don't heed when they see kids walking, and they, they're kind of oblivious to, to school being let out or drop off and let out. So that's what I'd like to see, or get some comments from the council and from Matt, Matt Keeper of Maps, about adding some weighted signs, flashing signs in that Kennedy School area.
Well, I can honestly say that I'm aware of those times. I will do anything to avoid going by there. So I think probably not one that's habitually going by, the school's being let out, or people are robbing them off. And I don't know whether that's just me, or whether a lot of people are like that. I'm not opposed to the signs. I don't know. Do we have any kind of police reports or statistics to back up speeding on that road at that time?
Can I ask that question?
Certainly, pose that question.
For me, I don't think it's so much speed as it is, parents parked across the street, the kids are, young people, and they just dart across the street. And if you're not paying attention, you could smack one's on the end. That's just, that's just the reality of it. They run over their parents' car, get in and go home, and...
I purposely slow down to 10 miles an hour when I go through that section of town every now and then.
I did talk with Mr. McFulwer just before the meeting, and that is a major road, so it's MDOT, and the state, he believes, correct me if I'm wrong, believes the state may have to be involved in that, but maybe we can check, we can make decisions tonight, I guess.
Well, it's a major street, but the, the point I made was, if we do any signalization, the signalization has to be approved by the state. There's some local things that we can do that I believe Chief Bachman has the authority to do, but we can research what those are.
Just, just a question, just based on your knowledge. I've seen these signs with like the photo cells on the top with the LEDs today, so you don't have to run all the wires and stuff? That is, am I imagining that, or is that...
Oh, that's, yeah. If you remember, years ago, they, they, there used to be signs, the school speed limit signs with the flash and light that were on the highway. MDOT eliminated all those because they didn't want to pay the utility bills for them anymore. But now they have solar powered ones, and they have LEDs which take, you know, obviously a lot less energy. So this is something we can research.
Well, being a parent whose kid played for R and B hit by a car, I'd be happy to see a streetlight put right there. You're perfectly happy seeing, not a streetlight, but an actual stoplight. Have the flash during the, in the after-school hours, but during the school day, put a light there.
And that's kind of what I was referring to Councilman Zlinski. Traffic signals require that you meet certain warrants, traffic warrants, and you have to prove that it's a necessity. And the state has a whole series of warrants that you would have to meet in order to be able to signal that intersection.
Warrants, what do you mean by warrants?
We're talking about over...
Warrants are accidents, speeding, their turning, traffic volumes, movements.
You're talking about over the highway type signals?
Yeah.
I go to La Crosse twice a year to visit my mom. All the school zones there have flashing signals on the side of the street. In the program, so at the appropriate time, even for holidays and weekends and stuff, they don't flash, but they flash and drop to a 15 mile an hour speed limit. And people seem to be pretty sensitive to that. Would something at the side of the street require the same level of approval, or?
I think it, it doesn't require the warrants, but that's something that we can research and possibly do a revenue sharing or grant for if it was...
Because it seems pretty effective out there. Traffic comes to a crawl when those lights are flashing.
And I think that's what you were referring to.
And they're independent of regular signals.
Right.
I see them a lot when I go to Florida. You see them a lot down there, and I, my friend got... And I, my friend got accidentally stopped at a side note, it's five hundred dollars, so it was pretty significant that he slowed down.
There's an individual with a Spicer group that works on situations like this. He's utilized him for some work at Mainland River Street intersection. We could certainly ask him to weigh in on options that he would recommend for that, for that area and bring back to council a list of options. And maybe to include pricing and see what your interest level is.
Well, I think, I would think it would also be applicable for Catholic Central on thirty-one. Because I think that's another one, you've got signs off to the side, but people that see it's forty miles an hour and are cruising down through there in traffic. If something's not flashing or something like that, they're apt to miss the small print below the sign that talks about the hours of the school zone. I think years ago they had one there, didn't they?
Yeah, it used to be, it's a forty mile an hour posted speed limit there. And during the school hours, the light would flash on it and it would drop it to thirty. I believe they've eliminated that now.
There's a yellow band on it.
And just to, just to go back to that, when, when the Family Fair Store was being built, they did a traffic study to see if a light could be put at twelfth and thirty-one. An overhead signal, and the warrants weren't even meant to be able to put it there. So that's, it's a pretty high standard.
It's, you have to have so many deaths for a stop sign?
It's, well, there's a whole list of warrants, and you have to qualify for a circum amount of them.
If in the meantime, we could do like a crosswalk from Maple to where most of the parents park there, would that be something?
We have painted crosswalks there.
Another option is work with schools to have every, all the pickups on the side street and not on Mainland.
I was gonna say, can we reduce?
Last year they did a program to change that and encourage people. We actually had, there used to be signs on Maple Street, southbound on the west side, that had school drop off or no parking or something like that. But the school came up with a plan where the buses drop off in front of the school. And they occupy all the parking spaces in front of the school. And then if you come through by the old junior high annex, by the old football field, that's the parent drop off now. And so the, the school had us remove all of the parking signs or a lot, we, we put up no parking signs on the west side of Maple now to try to alleviate some of that.
But there's parking on the east side too, which really, you know, cars are trying to drive around a little bit. And as you said, kids are darting out and it's hard to see, could you eliminate parking on both sides?
You allow my way parking on both, you know, obviously there's some residents on that side. You can also consider something along the lines of no parking during the school, the school hours or certain times of the school and allow it otherwise. That might be a, a less expensive option and then ask the police department to monitor that.
I would like to see that, I'd like to see some presence on, on Maple Street because people, they, they don't go the speed limit, especially coming up the hill, going north. They just, it's forty miles an hour.
And when it's dark, it's.
So if, if council wishes, we can, I'll have staff come back with some recommendations or options for council's consideration. And let you decide which, if any, you are interested in pursuing.
I just hate to see any child getting hurt there.
Are there any like classes done within the school just to kind of remind kids of safety during the start of the year?
We set up communications, continue to use in our newsletter, emails to parents, well, we ask them not to park over there. Do, you know, please do not park over there, wait for us to come to pick up line. Or there's the, with Jefferson, the annex, the whole building, pass around the street. We encourage them to do that, we ask them to do that. However, people do what they want to do sometimes and they park over there because it's either convenient or whatever. They, as a principal there for years, I was out there. There was a period of time where we had a, our safe net worker was kind of functioning as a crossing guard. The issue is, you know, coloring, there's close to four hundred kids leaving. Not all of them will go to the same spots, some will take off, you know, they run down the sidewalk to see their friend, they cross. And it's an everyday, you know, every day that the bell rings and same kids are leaving. And it, it, there is some traffic that's moving by there pretty quick. We try to get personnel out there and make sure we're being safe. Encourage parents to use the proper pickup and drop off spots, but it does continue to happen. We put in newsletters, and this is a, since two thousand and three, it's still a problem today.
What about training with the students as far as not darting between cars and things like that's being done in school?
We do, we have our, we teach behavior expectations for lunchroom, bathroom, you know, everything. So it's something that we've gone over all the time. And it's, you know, it's helpful, but it's not going to solve the issue. And some of the issue is the kids are being cautious, but sometimes the drivers aren't. And again, you think about, we have the other elementary school Jefferson down the same street. And sometimes parents are in a hurry to go pick up a kid, you know, and then the same parent a few years later comes to the other people, or at least. A few years ago, they were in a hurry to get their child at Jefferson. It, it's just a congested area. And then you get a high school, a middle school down on Twelve Street where people come down, a lot of younger drivers, sometimes they, you know, are, are maybe not as cautious or driving a little faster. So there's a ton of traffic going by there. This is something that we've been concerned about for a long time, and we're doing the best of what we have. You know, we, we had, the bus pickup was, was kind of back in that same drop off pickup area that parents now. But now with the fences up, there's kind of room between the field and the fence to safely let the kids wait there. So we had to change things up, so with the space we have available, we're doing, yeah. We continually update parents and talk to people and make sure we have parapoles and staff out there, make sure kids are being saved as possible. But it's a busy road.
Yeah, it's gonna have to be a multi-layer approach.
Anything, if you need information, come up with more, we'll help and cooperate again.
Thank you. Any other input?
I think I would be, I'd just like some more input, or I'd like some input from Chief Bachman. I think a ticket's really effective. And I know a light would help, I'm not, I'm not opposed to putting anything up to protect somebody, but I do think a few tickets is, is effective. I think it really, it's something that they should be watching.
Yeah, I already noted to contact the police department tomorrow.
A combination of lights and tickets.
You know, another option too is if we did have an increased police presence there during the time school starts and stops, you know, during the peak traffic time. The, and then if we periodically parked a patrol car that wasn't being used in, up by the cafeteria entrance and such. And on a lot of instances, police departments, sheriff departments will set a vehicle out in a particular area that's not even manned. And just the presence of the vehicle has an impact on people slowing down and being aware. So there's lots of, lots of options that won't cost us a lot of money and, and energy. But I know as I've ridden with police officers before, that is one of the spots where they park and, and do radar checks. Right by the middle square at the old middle school.
It's a good idea to park, maybe you could park a, a vehicle there at the high school or at Kennedy. They used to do that when I was attending the Miami Boat Show, change it a little bit, but cars would be going down in a residential area, they would see that car, that police car, slow right down, post drivers and such. But after a few days, that car never moved and it was dirty, so. It does, it does help.
I would like to see no parking on the east side as well, like Mr. Kennedy was saying. You know, you can drive down, and this is actually happened to me, you drive down through there and you're doing fifteen and you're looking around and trying to see them. They dart, they dart out and you slam the brakes on them, they're caught like you're in a headlights, you know, I mean. Luckily, you're only doing fifteen, I can't imagine something thirty, but they're, but they are young people. And sometimes when we're young or old, we don't think like, like we should.
No, borders meet too with the semi-traffic coming in up and down Maple Street too, and they're, they're not even to the speed limit.
Will this stay working?
Any other input? Okay, next we'll move on, finding conjunction, reduce speeds on River Street.
Another one for me with speeding. Speed limit's twenty-five miles an hour downtown. I don't know if that can be changed, if that takes an act of Congress to be changed on fifteen, like around the beach. Again, people do not heed that twenty-five mile an hour speed limit, just like they don't heed the two-way traffic, you have to look both ways. Again, a child or an older person that doesn't move that fast steps out and somebody coming down at a speed higher than twenty-five, even twenty-five, they're gonna get hurt or killed. So ideally, I'd like to see a police presence downtown. They used to sit up at the outpost and shoot people with radar, that tended to slow people down. Or if the speed limit cannot be changed, put in temporary speed bumps.
That was brought up before, and because it's, and I, this is godly, ten years ago. Eight years ago, wow. And Bachman at that time said that you cannot change the speed limit. You can put a temporary removable speed bump in this, but you cannot change the speed downtown. It's the state without an act of, basically, God. But I, I'm with you.
I, I drove that this morning, twenty-five miles an hour, it's about ten o'clock, a lot of parking, not a lot of foot traffic down there. And that's, that's not a real unreasonable speed, I was going about twenty-two. But I'm gonna share with you that, yeah, sometimes I'll sit on the bench on, on River Street and people have got to be going forty miles an hour when they're going by me. And I've, I've raised that issue before. We used to have some concrete based items that would sit out in the middle of the street concerning pedestrian roadway and the crosswalk. And I understand those have disappeared. I saw some yesterday in Saginaw that were nice teardrop shaped things and, and the base was about the size of a coffee can. The pyramid shape. It clearly said state law is yield to pedestrians in the crosswalk. The VA Center down there. They don't know if they were real expensive, but they looked like fiberglass, they were brightly lighted, and people were paying attention to them there. You know, that, that might also be an aid to have some of those put out on alternate crosswalks to make sure people are slowing down and, and, and paying attention. Some states are, are pretty diligent, some communities are pretty diligent about making sure that people are yielding to pedestrians. The, and I know there's been some, some concern about First Street and, and Maple Street in having signs, you know, walk, don't walk like we had on thirty-one and First Street. Because there's a lot of pedestrian traffic on that intersection too. Especially when we're having events in town, people are parking up on First Street, Second Street, Third Street to walk downtown. But I think there's a lot of options and I would share, Councilmember Woodless, concern about the speed that people perceive down River Street. And it seems the further they go down River Street, you get down towards the, some, some of them are, I'm sure, exceeding forty miles an hour by the time they get down there. Be a matter of compliance. You know, we've got, don't we have a sign somewhere, a portable sign that we can put up that shows people what their speed is?
Police Department does, yes.
I mean, we could put that out. Do we own one of those, Jeff?
Yes, the police department has one and regularly puts it out in areas where they're having traffic issues. Speaking to the yield signs, they're actually, well, the DDA purchased a number of those at the crosswalks. I've, the legend is that one of them by the hooves got thrown in the river, but the rest of them were damaged by, by traffic, turning corners and clipping them. And the last couple that we had out, I think we still have a couple left. But almost several times a day, we'd have to go, cars would, would clip them and they would shove them off into different lanes. So just before Patrick Kay left, he and I started doing some research on different systems that we could put that were, that were a little more stationary, if you will, during the summertime, but that could be removed in the winter. And then obviously when you left, that kind of, that effort stopped, so that's something we can bring up with the new director too.
I think it's private patient, the laws, the state law is twenty-five miles an hour. But I have been in town where those speed limits are, so I guess what I'm asking is, is there some way we could finally do some research and see if there is a way to change it or is there not?
I believe Traverse City's downtown is fifteen miles an hour.
I, I don't know, but yeah, certainly we can look at that. Yes, and again, I'm gonna approach it much like the previous conversation and ask the police department to give some more attention there. And then come back with some options for council to consider.
I think one issue is there's no signs at all for, for the speed limit on River Street. And, and even my vehicle with the GPS where I can pick up the speed, speed limits as I'm driving along, it blank when I'm on River Street. So even if someone's got their navigation system on, they're not gonna see a speed limit down there. And the absence of signs would certainly promote people exceeding the twenty-five limit we've got already.
I do like the signs showing one-way traffic, but there are several now downtown which should help.
We're almost complete with that part of the agenda, so.
And we'll, I'll bring the DDA into the discussion, what their, what their thoughts are on, on the issues.
Another option.
Jeff, I'm, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be back down at Saginaw Monday for, my wife's got another appointment at the hospital down there. I'll get some information while I'm there and take some pictures of the smaller signs that they have. I remember the ones we had, the base was quite a large item, I could, I could see if there's two lanes of traffic flowing, people would have a tendency to maybe clip them. But these, these were much more compact, but they were also quite obvious to traffic. But I'll see what I can give them, possibly, yeah, I can do that and ask inside, you know, where they go, so.
Is there an option of maybe having a temporary speed limit during the summer or when there's events?
Want to do the research?
I know for the Halloween perpetrating, there was, I mean, one of my kids almost died there.
I think we're gonna really want to do something about it, especially as we go into our next discussion on outdoor campaigns. Because that does put more people on the sidewalk. Might be some, and I know they're supposed to cross at the light, but you know, there's gonna be some people that are not gonna cross the line.
The jaywalkers.
The jaywalkers.
So is there any other input or discussion on the speed limit question?
Thank you for all your comments on, on these two items, I appreciate it.
Well, I guess that leads right into the discussion on outdoor campaigns.
Yeah, well, the DDA is disinvolved. Tyler, could you tell us how involved they are at this point, what's going on?
Sure, you want me to go there?
Yep.
So we talked about the sidewalk policies briefly today. The design committee will meet at the end of the month and should be discussing that. They did not meet last month. Denise put together a very good comparison of other municipalities that have policies or ordinances. So that's what we're working on currently.
Was there anything from the council perspective that they would like to see as the DDA works on and looks at that?
My, I know when we allow other events to go on, we, we require that they have liability insurance. Is that something we should be looking at here? If we're allowing people to use that to maybe naming us on the insurance?
I can, I can ask the city attorney to weigh in on it, and I've seen it. I seem to recall we discussed that, especially in the request for TJ's and he did not see that, as I recall, bringing or increasing the city's liability exposure. But I will double check with that.
You know, I'll let you mention that, it just kind of popped into my head. There was a, Mr. Bachman got an opinion from the.
Better work insurance?
Insurance carrier that kind of indicated that there should be some insurance there, if I remember the letter correctly.
Could be, but we'll follow up on that.
I think, I think one of the samples I saw of ordinance from Mount Pleasant indicated a form was signed along with the approval for that, along with a nondisclosure and the city named as an additional turd for that outside area. Because they are placing property out there that could be an obstacle to pedestrian traffic. And I, I think it is a good plan to have a policy that applies uniformly because you have different widths of sidewalks as you go up and down and, and on some of the side streets coming down Maple. And, and I know from what I've read, there's a minimum forty-eight inch, unobstructed clearance required for American for Disabilities Act compliance. So we need to be sensitive to some of those sorts of things. And I believe there was an incident, what, yesterday on Election Day over signage and stuff that was placed out on the sidewalk that was obscuring other signs and stuff. But it was a one-day political event, I think, what, police weren't involved around it?
Yes, they were, they were there. They, they handled it very well by the way. The, the people were commenting on how all the police, our city police did handle it, defused the situation and was able to calm everybody down and everybody went away peacefully.
Now, with that said, is this, is it just for serving alcohol for outside dining or is this for anything?
Anything that you do outside on, on the public sidewalk.
Okay, so like happy y'all has flowers that are next to the building in the summertime. Same with Northern Spirits, I think they have their flowers out.
I never really considered that because they talked about dining.
Dining is the primary.
That's, I'd like to give a definition here.
I'd kind of be interested in hearing.
Is it gonna be dining or, or anything?
You don't have to talk to it, but.
Well, I know there are communities that regulate outdoor displays, you know, as well as outdoor seating, outdoor serving areas, any manner of things that might be out on the city sidewalk to include signs.
And I, you know, I brought that up, I mentioned it to Tyler, there's, there's several signs downtown that, that exceed the sizes listed in the city ordinance right now on signage for the, the A-frame size. And, and I think in some instances, business owners may not be aware that there is an ordinance that restricts the size and the placement of some of those. Then the issue is who's responsible for compliance on that or bringing it to business owners' attention? And, you know, do we want the DDA to self-police, do we want?
Well, I guess I would like to hear from council, you want us to approach this as regulating use of city sidewalks for any activity?
Yes, I think so. And it's probably gonna apply even, you know, when they put racks of clothing out signs on the clothing stores too because it's probably.
Remember, we have sidewalk sales and stuff, that's, that's kind of, you know, everybody participates events. But then in, in other instances, people place things for sale out on the sidewalk also, even when we're not hosting an event in general, it should be some sort of restriction. I know some people have their tables and chairs right up against the face of the building and other people have them out in the middle of the sidewalk. I would think for safe travel and especially people that are disabled, we want to make sure that we've got the required clearance and not something out there that creates a hazard.
Most ordinances or policies will require some minimum separation for, for pedestrian pathway. So if I'm hearing council correctly, you want it to address any use of the city sidewalk, putting up seating, dining, display signs, merchandise, things of that nature?
And the alcohol service in itself has its own regulations from, from liquor control in that it has to be a designated, an identified area and the people have to be seated and they can't leave the premises with the alcohol and such as that.
I'm aware of that. And at this time, do we want to look at just a specific area of the community? As an example, the DDA district or just on River Street or how expansive do we want it?
I would say just River Street.
Let's say the DDA district, I mean, because that takes in consideration.
The brewery?
Brewery and Division Street, so. What I don't wanna see is something that's going to hinder businesses from expanding their bottom line.
Yeah, I'm concerned about charging two-hundred a fee for something like that.
I don't think, I don't even want a fee.
It should be any fee.
Right.
No fee.
I think it should be permitted, it has a, in a permit and that we should know about that and we should be sure we're covered a lot by the liability.
So, so you want a permit, but no fee?
I'm not sure you have to charge a fee.
I'll comment, but I think what it sounds like, you just wanna make sure everything's standardized.
Yes, yes.
The signs are standardized, how they're doing this, you know, just everybody's working by the same rules is, I think, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, that's what I'm thinking.
And you would like the DDA to kind of look at that and bring something back to council? Is that?
Yeah, that's.
And I think, and I think identify who's responsible for ensuring compliance of it also. You know, it, it's, you're only gonna have so many people doing the job and I've raised issues on, on our sign ordinance before and especially during the campaign season, people putting signs in the public roadway. And I know we don't have staff to go out and check on that and then send someone out and remove signs and such, but.
Are you envisioning, envisioning this to be an ordinance or a policy?
I would think an ordinance would hold more force.
Well, it would gives, it gives the city more options. Exact compliance.
Yes.
Now, I think it's only fair to remind everybody that if you don't know this, I think we have a, an agreement with the boat house because their debt encroaches.
We lease that too on their headboard.
Right. And is that going to be different than what we're talking about here because they are?
Well, it's different because it's not the sidewalk. And we already have agreement, lease agreement with the boat house.
Okay.
That specifies, you know, that they get to use that around our city property, they have to pay an annual fee to maintain that use. Yeah, without, without any fees. I don't want to charge any business owner any, any type of money. Is that cool?
Yeah, I'm thinking, as long as we don't extend like some communities have where they actually lease parking spaces and stuff, we, we don't need to give up any parking spaces downtown.